Okay, we've seen a motion for reconvening in an open session and seal the minutes for executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
There were no votes taken in our executive session tonight. Let's see, I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of June 4th, 2018 to order.
Do you consider our motion to seal the minutes?
I thought we did.
I mentioned that.
Are you going to reconvene and seal it?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I want to open the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of June 4th, 2018 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to a republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first off, consent agenda, approve town council meeting minutes of May 21st, 2018, executive session minutes of May 7th, 2018, executive session minutes of April 2nd, 2018, set July 2nd, 2018 as a hearing date for a multi-event permit filed by the Friends of the Land Trust regarding the music in the Valley concert series, approve the petition of National Grid Horizon for a joint pole location on Tomahawk Road, approve refunds resulting from overpayments of 2017 real property taxes submitted by the tax collector.
Could we pull up executive session April 2nd? We haven't all read them yet.
Sure.
Motion to approve all of the town council meeting minutes except for the executive session minutes of April 2nd, 2018.
Sir. Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Everything else, do you agree?
Yeah, should have made the motion consent.
The motion to approve all of the town council meeting minutes, including the petition to National Grid Music and Ball Concert, approve refunds from overpayments submitted by the tax collector.
Sure.
I do accept that.
Sir. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. First, public forum. Anyone else? Next, under my report, couple items briefly. This past Saturday was the Ashway Free Library groundbreaking ceremony. In addition to the facility, I was asked to attend, but I was playing golf with the Hopkinton Police Department. That was the second item. So I couldn't be in two places at once, so I had fun at the golf tournament at Pinecrest. We didn't win any trophies, but the fun was had by all. Next, Town Manager, what can I add?
Thank you. Four requests or proposals. During May, we drafted four advertisements and four requests for proposals for the acquisition of the DPW pickup truck, completion of the HPD roofing project, and material rental including three-year contract, all of which were funded through the FY 2019 budget. And also, we got an RFP that will go out, be advertised next Sunday, for a one-year water systems management and technical operations contract. And the bid awards for all four RFPs are earmarked for the July 16th Town Council.
Okay, can I ask, any questions? Okay, thank you. Next, under all business, number one, rendered decision regarding the application for a zone amendment to the zoning map filed by the Town of Hopkinton and Coastal Plastics Incorporated for property located at 35 Mechanic Street, identified as Assessor's Map Lot 13B as a result of a hearing held on May 21st, 2018. Any further questions or comments in the council? Unless it matters, okay? Kevin was nice enough to draft this motion for this particular item, so if anybody wants to read into it, that'd be wonderful.
Any else feel like reading anything?
This is the draft motion to approve the meeting of business.
Oh, yeah.
After a public hearing held on May 21st, 2018 on petition for zone amendment to the zoning map filed by the Town of Hopkinton by Encouraged Town Solicitor and at the request of Coastal Plastics Inc., the property located at 35 Mechanic Street identified as Assessor's Map 15 Lot 13B owned by Coastal Plastics Inc., requesting a corrective zone change amendment from RFR 80 to manufacturing and following consideration of said petitions and the evidence presented, I make a motion to approve said position and adopt proposed ordinance number 261 based upon the following findings. The findings are as follows. Based upon the evidence and testimony of record presented and submitted at the May 21st, 2018 hearing, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to the zoning map was endorsed and recommended for passage by the Town of Hopkinton Planning Board following a public hearing held before said planning board on May 2nd, 2018 and embodied in its advisory opinion submitted to the Town of Hopkinton and dated May 14th, 2018, which was received into the record of these proceedings. That said advisory opinion specifically found that the proposed amendment supports the Town of Hopkinton's comprehensive plan's land use goal number two, to preserve the historic character of the villages and surrounding undeveloped areas, and that it also supports land use policy number 20, which encourages industrial development that is compatible with the community character and surrounding land uses. And that it also implements the comprehensive plan by bringing the zoning map into consistency with the comprehensive plan's future land use map that the council hereby adopts and incorporates by reference the findings of the planning board after determining that these findings are supported by the evidence and testimony of record. That the building located on the parcel in question is and has been the site of an industrial building that was constructed in approximately 1880 and has been maintained and used for industrial and manufacturing activities consistently since that time. That the parcel was erroneously designated with zoning classification RFR 80 due to a clerical error by the town that occurred sometime during or before 1994. That in spite of this erroneous zoning classification error, the parcel consistently and appropriately has been assessed intact as if it was properly designated as a manufacturing zone. That the adoption of proposed ordinance number 261 is consistent with the authority reserved in the council under the comprehensive plan to identify those areas in town where such uses are appropriate. That the adoption of ordinance number 261 will provide benefits to the town in terms of protecting and maintaining the current tax assessment status and the property tax revenues applicable to the parcel as a manufacturing zone. That this change will promote an important local and state objective to make sure that our zoning ordinance designations are accurate and fair. That the adjacent parcel located at Assessor's Map 15 Lot 13 is the site of a similar industrial building that has been properly zoned as manufacturing for many years. That the proposed change is suitable to the character of the location in question and constitutes a non-noxious use, and that the proposed change will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the town and is advantageous for some community.
That's one motion. Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion, folks? Comments? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Number two, 1904 Ashway Elementary School. I wanted to put these two items on, well, this one item or two sub items on the agenda after our last meeting to kind of move this topic in a positive direction, and I felt that we needed to have a formal vote. I think folks in the community wanted that. And also, too, to possibly form a subcommittee that would help facilitate that raising of that building, so. We'll get into more discussion and think about the subcommittee and what the objectives are, I guess, with council. Any questions about the first item?
Did you start with the motion?
Yeah.
No, I got to say it first.
Okay.
The council, the two years that I stepped down from the council, you guys had already voted to raise the building.
Did we vote?
Yes.
It was discussed, but you discussed.
I thought I...
So you think the one in council?
You four and Scott. Because I wasn't here the two years. It was a year before.
I think if we didn't vote for that, we did for two years ago.
No, it would have been, not these two years I wasn't on the council, so it would have been five and six years ago.
Right.
I think it was discussed, but it wasn't, it wasn't...
Oh, I was under the impression it was very...
I don't think it was.
We'll double down and do it again.
Then we also discussed, we discussed when you were on the council, because that's when you asked for the six-month lead to see if we could sell it to a realtor.
That's right.
Right. And I went along with you.
Yep.
And that's what turned it. And it didn't turn by.
So can we feel, council?
I don't have any issue. I think that as far as voting to raise the building, I think I'd have more to discuss under the subcommittee and how it works in conjunction with the town.
I think the only thing I'd like to say about it is I'd like to see, before we even get into raising the building, I'd like to see us go up to bid our RFPs for salvage, for salvage operation. That should be first. Take what worth we can get out of the building.
Well, yeah, it's part of the subcommittee.
Right, okay. And then proceed with the thought of how we can make it tear it down.
Very close on the salvage.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion that we vote to raise the 1904 building? After the discussion and work of a subcommittee to be determined.
And pending next fiscal year's budgetary allocation to it.
And pending next budget year's financial, fiscal allocation.
Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion, folks?
Yes, just since we're discussing it again, just to say, we all, I'm sure we all agree that it's, we just don't have a choice. We don't like to tear down buildings that are, have potential, but we, it's in a terrible location. I mean, well, I mean, it's, we're unable to find anywhere that we can use it in the near future or in the far future. It's just not going to happen, so. So the building will have to come down during our next budget cycle. We'll do our best to get the right amount of money designated and then tear it down.
And immediately, since there is question of town, we have to put a fire alarm system in there for $20,000?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yes, so it's not going to cost any more, but...
No, but should maybe our insurance rates go down?
Possible. All right, motion in a second. Any further comments, folks? By anybody? None for me. All those in favor?
Aye.
I would regret.
Next item under that Ashway Elementary School was the discussed, consider and possibly vote to form a subcommittee.
I would suggest that, well, we have two options. We could...
Let me just, one second. I just want to kind of leave in a second. So what I was thinking of, and I know some folks out in the audience at the last meeting had mentioned this, you know, I think it's a good idea, since we've got a little bit of time since the next fiscal year's budgetary allocation, to get, you know, I'm thinking maybe five to seven members of the community, a council liaison, some members of the school committee, school administration, teachers, anybody that wants to. I'm certain that we won't turn anybody away. I just don't want to have like 30 people. But I think five to seven works great. I know Lisa expressed an interest, Ron did, and whoever else. So, and I'm thinking as far as the committee, some of the goals might be to look at salvage companies that could offset the expense that the town might incur to knock the building down. Look at maybe federal, state, local grants that might help out with the cost of the tomb. And just some of the mechanics of this particular project, and maybe do some of the heavy lifting so that when it comes time for the council to hopefully appropriate the money, it'll be there and we'll have a game plan in place. So that's kind of what I was thinking. Then the rest of the council weigh in on what you guys think an objective would be other than those couple items. Feel free to add that.
I think there should be emphasis on a committee of Ashway residents. You know, it's, I know the building and stuff like that, but I didn't grow up when I grew up. And Scott, Scott went to a school, that kind of stuff, so there's, there's a tie.
Your preference to Ashway.
Yes. There's a tie between Ashway, certain people on Ashway and the school.
Well, I would like to suggest that whoever goes on this committee do so because they have some expertise that they could lend to it. So I wouldn't just want Ashway people. It's a town issue. Town is going to pay for it. What I'm thinking is, we need to meet someone from the school, and I would wish to send a letter with Mr. Ritchie and ask him if there's someone who would like to designate. And I particularly be interested in designating someone who is familiar with the interconnections. We've got gas, electricity, water, sewer. I'm not sure how much, but I know, I believe septic and water are tied in, oh, and the gas. So there are interconnections, and so how is that handled? And is there, there may be something on the school end that they need to take care of with these interconnections. So anyway, I think we need somebody from the school end that has expertise in the building. We know that we've heard from our new planning board member, Ron, I'm sorry.
Prowitz.
Prowitz, thank you, who has expertise, so we do want to look for that, too. Not only that, but, and we'll see, there might be some folks here, the teachers, or neighbors, or whatever, so. And like Frank said, in a council liaison, but I'm particularly concerned about those interconnections that the school's aware of, that we need to be aware of, and how are we going to deal with that?
Yeah, I thought, I thought you had to put disconnects between, the separation between the buildings, oh god, many years ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
When they had the boiler problem.
You don't fill up the gas?
Yes.
I would also like that when the subcommittee is formed, that as they're discussing how to do salvage and how to do the raising of the building, that they work in conjunction with Bill McGarry as well, because he is more knowledgeable about RFPs and how we establish that and how we establish what kinds of money, what we should put on that. Because by the time we get to February, we need to have, we need to have knowledge about what it's going to cost. It can't be just arbitrary. So I think some of that information needs to be done, certainly by December, so that we have some idea of what is going to go on with some kind of, not a bid process, but something on an RFP so people know what they're trying to bid on.
Yeah, let's give them like a November 1st deadline, so that it's before the holidays start.
Right, exactly. That would be, that would be good.
And they give a report by that date.
Question to the new council.
And the new council would just be coming in around that time.
The other thing that, our most pertinent part of, I mean, it's all pertinent, but they've got a two-month window to demolish this thing and get it out. That's savings and everything, because...
You guys get out at the end of June, correct, when you start?
Next year's a little bit earlier because we got rid of that February vacation.
Okay.
So I want to say around June 14th, you know, with no snow days.
So that's what, we have, I've been thinking about this.
What's going to be done at the top?
Yeah, it's going to be done during...
Which means you have to establish the person doing it ahead of town.
Correct.
Because they have to schedule it. And maybe we could, with Bill's help, put together a, the charge, and also, instead of just the usual volunteer form, ask them to offer any expertise that they have in helping with what we, with the charge itself that's written up. So yeah, so we want to do that, and once that, and we could have that ready for the next council meeting, if that sounds, yeah. Think that's okay, though? We'll put something together for the council to look at, and if you like the charge, then we can go for it and advertise on the website or whatever and try to get people.
I guess whoever's willing to volunteer, I guess we'll contact, maybe Bill, and just get your name on it.
Well, they usually go through the clerk's office. We're just suggesting in no form, I mean, just some additional information that maybe you can file in a letter form.
Right, exactly.
One thing, speaking of salvage, you think that building's old enough to have a cornerstone? You think it put a, there's a lot of...
Little man.
Yeah. I know they found one down in Westerly, where they tore down the point rocks. So it could have a cornerstone, which might be really interesting. So keep that in mind, it might be, might be something there.
And I also think that, you know, things like the weathering or things that we've taken down, what you want to say, there's a good chance that Hopkinton is storing it, storing it while we're figuring out what to do as a, so it doesn't have to store it in the school, per se. If it's stored.
That doesn't make...
Oh, right. But I'm sure that there's probably space on the meeting house. I might.
Here we go.
Does anyone else out there have any questions, comments about the subcommittee? Any else want to come up, please?
We haven't talked about that.
No, we haven't, no. I just want to seek any input before we, you know.
Hi, for the evening, just a little food for thought about the excavation group that needs a more salvage company to come in there and deal with this building. I want to draw your attention to that beam. What's that beam worth? If you go down a lumber, you can buy a beam like that for about $60. People watch out, it'll be $2,000 for that beam. They put an addition on their house. Door hinges, a full set of door hinges and hardware at Home Depot, they'll put $15, $20. A set like that in Springfield, they're getting $250, $300 for it. There's a lot of value in that building if it's done.
Correct.
Very, very careful.
Right, would that building have American chestnut in it?
More than likely.
Or if it has American chestnut, then you can double the price.
Each board is...
They're obviously valuable. If you look at the width of the boards, I don't suppose those were trees back then. I mean, the boards are...
There's boards that are old, rolled up.
The blackboards, how many blackboards are there?
A slate would...
You're kidding, slate boards, or... She's okay.
You're going to be refurbished into like a full table or a killing table, different than a dinner venue, you know, the slate itself. And they weren't cheap back then. You know, it wasn't just a little bit more, mostly they were an inch or better thick.
Hold on, I mean, if you pick the right salvage company, you'll get codes or bids from the salvage companies, do you have a factual of that business, right?
Not necessarily, not all of it.
So we should have...
Now look at the stuff that's easily removable, that they can make a quick buck on.
So we should have...
It's probably like any copyology, you might have to sit on it.
We should have somebody that knows what the stuff is truly worth, and then we know whether it's worth, you know, taking a bid for it.
Does a company know here, if Yankee Barn Homes, they could come in and look at those boards where a salvage company would say, well, that's a loan they have, that's okay. You know, the guy would say...
A salvage company still, Frank was saying, might be helpful, because once you start disturbing that building for copper, for beams, you're disturbing lead and asbestos. And as soon as you do that, the price goes up astronomically. So I think we need to look at those, because maybe there are some things that can be salvaged easily without disturbing the walls and the floors and the ceilings. I think that's a concern.
Even, even to address Mr. Delvaux, those things can all be evaded.
Sure.
It takes very little time to evade a room to get out the valuable stuff.
That's great.
There's a $5,000 piece of slate there, and it's going to cost you $500 to get it evaded and get it removed properly. It doesn't take a lot of math to figure that, you know, we want to do this the right way.
That'd be great.
You know, a lot of the salvage companies will come in and say, it's too difficult to get this stuff out. Somebody took it in there. If they can take it in there, I'll get it out. And not just me, I mean, there's, you know, lots of people that could move that out safely.
And the doors?
Environmentally safe, physically safe, you know. Old doors, they look a lot. Well, that's what Chris said, so.
Thanks, Ron.
I would appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else?
I moved it with...
Oh, sorry.
No, I just, I wanted to reemphasize, I did just a little little label ahead of time for this meeting, and I came up with 11...
What did you name?
Keter Twink, I wanted to set the people's head up. 11 companies from New Jersey that do salvage, do cycling, will go in and do exactly what you were talking about. And I don't know what the process is in terms of bidding it out, asking them to come and pull, you know, RFQs, RFPs, whatever, but there's a significant number that we can get multiple quotes from to determine the value, and depending on the contract that we write with whoever wins it, could significantly offset the cost to the town of having this, not mid one, so. When you guys do get your subcommittee volunteer forms.
Call Lisa.
Yes. We'll be in touch.
Call Lisa.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments about the formation of the subcommittee?
So also, but only because, you know, we want to close the talk, and I want to say this, I want to commend all of you, this, and I think really from all of us, taking this vote was very important. It's what we discussed last, at our last meeting, and it's what the community, the teachers have asked you to do, it's what the neighbors have asked you to do. I know it wasn't easy for all of you, but I really think that you demonstrated you're able to separate your personal feelings from your elected position and your role in the community as leaders, and you put our children first tonight. I think it needed to be said tonight that this deeply appreciated and recognized. That being said, I agree with Sylvia, I'm very willing to contribute in any way that you need to, either as a neighbor, because I may not be the school committee member either, so as a neighbor, as a voter, or as a school committee member, but I agree with Sylvia that probably someone from buildings and grounds from the school may be a sensible official seat as well. And perhaps, I'm not sure if Mr. McGary has done this before, what the format is, but as, and I know the subcommittee will vote for a chair, but someone who understands the dates and the timelines that you need is probably someone that should be chair so that we don't miss opportunities to be effective with our time. And my last comment is, I'm not familiar with the salvaging and really building buildings now, but not taking them down. But it seems to me a lot of this can possibly be done before June, all right, so long as every, the companies that come on site have their clearances, their safety clearances, and they're permitted by the school to be on site during any type of business or school days. But it sounds like some of this can probably get started long before the actual raising, right? The antique, the salvaging, having people come in to evaluate the value, to take out the boards, the slates, all of these hinges, that shouldn't have to wait, I don't think, until June, as long as they're willing to work around the safety and the protocols of the school. But again, really what I want to say is thank you. Thank you for doing your job as town officials and putting aside your bit of humor.
Thanks. Okay, we have a motion to, um, a subcommittee on the 1904 reason.
Okay, we form a subcommittee consisting of five to seven members that it specifically has, we can work with this, perhaps, one school committee member that is a resident of Hopkinton. Someone from the school that is familiar, someone perhaps, as she had mentioned, from buildings, that's familiar with the building.
Building and grounds department?
Right.
Right. Do you have multiple companies?
And also, one resident, one, someone from the, from our own Public Works that is a resident of the town. And that brought us up to three people, I believe, and that we, that, no, the NeoZone, we don't need to make that part of this, that'll be a member of the town.
Yeah, the council.
The council. But, and other than that, the additional members should be, hopefully, folks with experience in that area. So, but those were, I thought you'd want a school committee member, I thought you'd want someone from the school building and zone, you want someone from Public Works.
A teacher.
One of the teachers, yeah, principal of the school or whatever.
Someone from the elementary school. And that individual doesn't have to be a resident or not? Do we want them all?
No.
No. Right, and the building and grounds, it could be from who knows where.
As long as we get the subcommittee, I'm sure we can iron out, you know. I'm not, I don't want to turn folks away, but I don't want an unruly group either, so, in terms of numbers.
Yeah, so, all right, so...
Let me clarify that.
So let me finish the motion. So the motion was to make them a school, we want a school committee member that's a resident of the town, someone from the school from building and grounds department, and then we want someone from Public Works, and we want a representative from the Ashway School, and then other than that, people with experience.
Yeah, well, you said I don't want to turn people away.
And it's also, it's probably, there are probably some people that nobody's putting their two cents.
We could even go farther and say we want a member of the planning board there. We prefer... No, I mean, Ron's member, I mean, I would...
We only want to form a subcommittee, I don't want a little pimper in there that excludes folks.
I mean, certainly like Ron.
Thank you.
I think I already did.
Oh, yeah, you did.
I'll do it.
So, so, Tom, to second on that, you guys have any further discussion on this subcommittee formation?
Then I'd be able to receive applications to the council.
Good question.
Well, so we need a charge, the charge will have to be without...
No charge, you need to have the form.
We use the same form and just add something to it.
Couple, couple weeks. Anybody who's interested, call Lisa Clapart, the clerk, or email. Anybody's interested, call Lisa Clipmarten, the clerk, or email her. So we should have some of that mixed.
We'll have, yeah, we'll have, we'll have a document of Travis by the head of the subcommittee and then, and then, yeah, advertise it, put it on public. I mean, as soon as everything's ready, the website and, uh, people will need to advertise it, and other than that, we need to support it out.
Okay, motion was made, and seconded, we have any further discussion? Have you heard none? All of us in favor?
I have.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming out tonight, Danny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay, first item on new business, discuss, consider, and vote to consider a resolution of support for a letter of support regarding the Wild and Scenic River Designation of Seven Rivers of the Woodpawcatuck Watershed Association. Lisa, did you get this from Liz Boyer?
Yes.
Wyatt, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. You need the... So this is a, I've got my reading left. This is a statement that I'm going to have Sean Henry read. It's similar to the letter that I sent you. So, I'm Denise Boyer, I'm the project coordinator with the Woodpawcatuck Watershed Association. Sean Henry is actually one of your employees. He's also one of your appointees to the Wild and Scenic Study Committee. And he's actually currently our chairperson. So I'm going to have him read this statement.
Good evening, members of the council and Hopkinton residents. Three years ago, we had a bill passed by Congress that assigned the National Park Service to conduct a study of seven rivers in the Woodpawcatuck Watershed to see if they qualify as national wild and scenic rivers under the Partnership Wild and Scenic Rivers Program. A partnership wild and scenic river involves rivers that run primarily through private and state lands, which is different from the original Wild and Scenic Rivers Program that mainly involve rivers out west that run primarily through federal property. With a partnership wild and scenic river, the community is heavily involved in the protection and stewardship of the river. With that in mind, the National Park Service developed a cooperative agreement with the Woodpawcatuck Watershed Association to coordinate and conduct the study. WUPA assembled a study committee that includes representatives from all 12 towns of the watershed, both Rhode Island and Connecticut environmental agencies, the National Park Service, and local conservation groups. During the last three years, the Woodpawcatuck Wild and Scenic Study Committee has worked with the National Park Service to answer two questions. What is special about these rivers? And how are we going to protect these special values? The Hopkinton-appointed representatives, Maureen Kennedy and myself, have been a important part of this process. I've been chairperson. Not surprisingly, the committee has documented several outstandingly remarkable values of the rivers. These include geology and hydrology, the Charlestown Moraine and the high-quality aquifers that supply all of the drinking water for the watershed residents, outstanding ecosystems, exemplary cultural resources, wonderful examples of both Native American archaeological, archaeological sites and early American mill villages, and exceptional recreational opportunities in beautiful Sebring. In order to protect these values, we developed a stewardship plan. A copy of this plan can be downloaded from the Wild and Scenic website, which is wpwildrivers.org. This plan includes a survey of many, of the many protections at the town, state, and federal level that are already in place, suggestions for future projects that could help maintain or improve water and habitat quality, outreach activities to all residents of southern New England to help them understand and protect these valuable rivers, and a format for the stewardship council, which is similar to the study committee, which will include representatives from each watershed town, state agencies, and conservation organizations. Once the rivers receive wild and scenic designations from Congress, funds will be appropriated through the National Park Service to implement the stewardship plan. It will be the stewardship council who also manages the funds and prioritizes projects. So at this time, we are asking that the town of Hopkinton pass a resolution supporting the National Wild, the National Wild and Scenic Rivers Designation of the Seven Rivers in the Woodpawcatuck Watershed and endorsing the stewardship plan. With this support, we're also asking the town to appoint a representative to the stewardship council when it is formed. Wild and scenic rivers designation provide key benefits to the town. The stewardship plan was created in cooperation with local communities and is therefore heavily influenced by local and regional needs. The town will be a part of the stewardship council. National Park Service funds can be allocated to local communities for river stewardship. This opens up more recreational opportunities, provides more educational outreach programs to local students and residents, promotes local and state economic development and tourism, helps protect locally important cultural and natural resources. Projects that also protect the river will compete more favorably for federal funding than other grants. It may open up other avenues of funding for open space acquisitions near rivers, allows National Park Service to provide input concerning federally funded or permitted projects near the rivers. And National, Wild and Scenic status is permanent, protecting rivers for all future generations. Please note that Wild and Scenic Designation will not cost the town any money. It will also not impose any new federal regulations, nor does it require any dams to be removed. It will provide national recognition of the special rivers that the town already values and the funds to protect those rivers through partnership with the National Park Service. Most importantly, the town of Hopkinton will continue to have a part in the stewardship of the rivers. Once we have the support from all of the towns, we will have our congressional delegates in both Rhode Island and Connecticut submit another bill to Congress that will amend the National Wild and Scenic Rivers Act to include the Seven Rivers of the Woodpawcatuck Watershed. That is the final step in the designation process. We plan to do this later this year in October of 2018, which is the 50th anniversary of the National Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. So thank you for your consideration of the request. And we're here happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have so much information that I figured it would be better to have the statement in, try to bring it along. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I figured it was wonderful to do this, I just think it was great. You guys are amazing.
Frank's still like words.
It didn't cost us any money.
Yeah, I know, that was your problem. Yeah, it's not life with that.
That's your red bull.
We don't got to rip down the dams.
Yep.
No, these dams are considered small, running the river, so we, and I ask that specifically the National Park Service. You know, they're, they're, they're part of what the rivers are right now, and there's no reason to change that.
What are the, what are the Seven Rivers?
The Seven Rivers are the Beaver River, so the Chaput, I, I can think from east to west. So the Chaput River over near NewRI, Taylor's Landing there. That goes into the Great Swamp Management Area. The Queen Escapade River, the Beaver River, which you may not be familiar with, but it's a great trout stream.
Yes, it is.
The Wood River, the Pawcatuck River, and then Connecticut, the Green Falls River, which actually leads into the Ashway before it joins the Squawkatuck.
That's right, the Ashwack River.
And then Chinook River. I didn't bother, I wasn't, I didn't want to read them all out, but...
Um, this was something that, I was on the board back, 88 or 89, it was the late 80s whenever I was on the Woodpaw Board. And this was something that we wanted to do. And it just, it just took all this time. So I congratulate you for having done this.
Thank you.
It's been a long time.
This part of the process has been since 2010. We couldn't get designated before because they didn't have this partnership Wild and Scenic Rivers model for these rivers out east. And now they do, it's 25 years old and it's very successful and really, you know, I, I think it's produced a great product with the stewardship plan. And it will continue to include the towns in this process.
I think it's wonderful to be able to keep all of this in the public domain and be, and be protective. I think you've just done a great job. This has been really complex work and you've done a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
I just have a couple quick questions.
No, I'm good.
So, do you...
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I said, I just have a couple of questions. Are any of the towns going to sign that, the resolutions yet?
Oh, you're, you're actually my first. So we've been working at this, obviously, you've seen the publicity, I'm sure. And this is the month where I'm coming to all the town councils and actually asking for resolution. And I have not, I think, the, the, the few questions that I've gotten are concerned where, does this mean that the government can take my land if I live along the river? Which is, you know, and so, yeah, and actually not, the National Park Service doesn't own any property? They don't want it right now. But as you can see in the resolution, you know, we're stating it directly. And then the other question is, does this mean more federal regulations? And it doesn't because what we found is there's already good protection of the rivers with everything that's already written, and we don't want to write it anymore.
And we want them to stay in that.
And we want it to stay, yeah, we want it to stay in, in the state that they're in, that people are enjoying now.
And then, once the, this hopefully gets approved at the federal level, and as far as that stewardship council, what is your thoughts on how big it's going to be? Is each town going to have just one representative? Or is it going to expand or contract based on the...
So, so good questions. Right now, we have a, the stewardship plan has a suggestion for the stewardship council makeup, with the idea that the stewardship council itself can change it if they want. We're suggesting one vote per town, so one representative, but you could appoint an alternate if you wanted to. So each of the towns would have a vote, each of the state agencies, Connecticut DEP and Rhode Island DEM would have a vote. And the four conservation organizations that have been involved, besides Woodboard, it's been the Water Bond Society of Rhode Island, Safety Day, and Rhode Island, and Connecticut Nature Conservancy. But they may decide to invite more in, such as the Narragansett Chapter of Trine Unlimited has done a lot of conservation work in the watershed. Maybe the Land Trust Council, or maybe even each of the land trusts. They've all been very active with preservation. So we're, we're going to leave that for the next council. Once the, once the act is voted on, the bill is voted on by Congress, then the National Park Service will start to allocate funds to do this specifically. But we may start the stewardship council even before that because, as you know, for every Congress. So we may be coming to you anyways and saying, you know, in anticipation of this, we're going to start the stewardship council. And then we'd ask you, you know, it can either be you representatives now or however you want to do it, or that are interested, Sean may have had it by this time. So, so that's still a little bit to be decided, but we do have the basis for what we think it will look like.
And what about any tribal land or any tribal work?
We, we have asked and asked. And we would be very receptive to having anybody from the tribal force on the council.
I can vote for it, okay.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, okay. And thanks, Maureen, for your help and assistance on this, which was maybe most likely for me. Okay.
A move that we support the following resolution. That the town of Hopkinton hereby supports the recommendation for designation of the following rivers, Beaver, Chaput, Green Falls, Ashway, Duckett, Queen Escapade, Chinook, and Wood Rivers of the Woodpawcatuck Watershed are a partnership, excuse me, I didn't quite read this quite right, as a partnership wild and scenic rivers through an act of the United States Congress, with the understanding that the designation will not involve National Park Service only ownership or management of lands. And be a further result that the Hopkinton Town Council endorsed the Woodpawcatuck Watershed, excuse me, Woodpaw, Wild and Scenic River Stewardship Plan, stewardship plan, that's a mouthful, developed by the Woodpaw, Woodpaw Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee. That's it.
Okay, motion made, and seconded. Any further discussion, folks? Have you heard none? All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. One down.
We should have champagne, but water's better.
So, I did, and I did want to offer these, I wanted to weigh, so we actually approved it.
You're sneaky.
I didn't want to bribe you. I would like, you know, everyone to have access to one of these beautiful posters. This is a painting by Susan Shaw, who was a local artist, I'm sure.
We should, what are they doing in the buildings?
Yeah, and if you want, yeah. And if you want, you can have these available for anybody that comes in. And I also have brochures that, if you want to take them, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, thank you. Okay.
So much champagne, did you suck water?
Last public, last public floor, if anyone else, you can do it. Motion adjourned, please. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.